Good morning, everyone. I'm John Comel, still Chair of the New York Power Authority. Happy New Year, one and all.
Still.
We start another year, another decade, and happy to have all of you with us this morning. We've got, as always, a full and robust agenda and look forward to your participation and enjoyment with me here. As fellow trustees, trainer, excuse me, the candor Balboni and McKibben trustee Pacentey is participating via video. While we have a small turnout at the moment, we will, over the course of the dialogue, have Gil and many of his team and staff participate with us. As always, this meeting's been duly noticed as required by the open meetings law, and I hereby call this joint session of both the Power Authority and Canal Corporation to order. We've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Unless anyone has some recommendations or changes, I'd ask for motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So won't.
Second, thanks very much. Mike Judge, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. As we typically do, we will start with a executive session that should run an hour or so, maybe a tad more if we could have a motion to deploy to executive session.
Second.
I remove under 105 of the public officer's law.
You're a trigger happy with the second.
Financial and credit history of a particular person.
I love this motion.
We have a motion, and we had a second ahead of the motion, so I'll take it with the motion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, thanks very much. We'll be back in a bit. As always, no votes were taken during our executive session discussion. I could ask for a motion to bring us back into open session.
So move.
Second, thanks very much. Judge and Dennis, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, we previously received and reviewed contractors' list, made sure there were no conflicts of interest. I know everyone's so advised. Karen, unless there's any other changes, I'll move on. Okay, great. We start with our consent agenda. Everyone's hopefully had an opportunity to review that. If you have any questions, happy to entertain them. Otherwise, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented to us.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Judge and Tracy, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Gil. Start the new year with a look back at last.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Good morning, trustees, staff, and the people who are participating or listening in via video and web. This is our first board meeting in 2020, so it's kind of late, but happy 2020 to everyone. As customary, I start with our scorecard. So this is now our year-end scorecard. You know, I thought we would be all green. We have a little bit of a yellow on O and M budget performance, but let me explain what that is. We were less than 1% over budget, really due to pension and other post-employment benefit costs that are not really within our control, but subject to the performance of the previous year's stock market of those investments. But for the items that we were, we have full control, we did very well. But, you know, we try and set these goals, and we don't want to put asterisks or excuses. We want to make sure that we are good fiduciaries and cost managers of the resources of the Power Authority. The other executive members, Joe Kessler, Sarah Salati, will explain in detail some of the underlying aspects of this metric when they make their presentations. But overall, excellent performance by the team in 2019, and, you know, really, really finished strong in terms of also bringing us to the completion of our NIPA 2020, which I'm going to be talking a little bit in my presentation. So NIPA 2020, we did finish extremely strong. This was the strategic plan that we published in 2014.
And credit. Just for clarity, obviously, we're in 2020, so NIPA 2020 isn't this year. NIPA 2020 is our strategic plan.
Correct.
The last decade.
The last, well, really, 2014 to the present, right? Yes. So it was our strategic plan that we put forth in 2014. We've been executing against that up to this year. And if you recall, we had three, we had six strategic initiatives, and I'm happy, I'm not going to read what's on the slide, but I'm happy to report that we have achieved the goals that we have set forth in each of those strategic initiatives.
So this scorecard is all green?
This one is all green. We have some notable, as you can see in the slides, notable achievements here. Credit to the staff for doing such a great job. We also, in parallel, in the middle of that strategic planning horizon, the state decided to transfer the New York State Canals to the Power Authority about three years ago. And as we have discussed in previous meetings and as recent, as in the December board meeting, we are now in the works. Things are moving along, and we've launched and started the re-imagination of the canals, which is going to be the largest adaptive reuse of an iconic and historic infrastructure anywhere in the United States. You will hear from Eves Noel today about where we are and the initial steps that we have taken to launch this initiative. Last year, our state government passed the law, the governor signed it, CLCPA, Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. It's a nation-leading climate change legislation. It's very aggressive, very forward-looking, and we are, we have always been positioned to, along the path of what we're calling CLCPA, especially when we, if you recall, we had our NIPA 2020 developed in 2014, but we refreshed that plan in 2017, 2018, introduced our moonshot initiatives and our digital strategy. So we have always been along the path, very consistent and at the forefront of CLCPA. Now that it's the law of our state, we are going to be putting forth a new strategy we're calling NIPA 2030. I won't go to in detail about that because we're scheduled to present that to you, along with requesting allocations of investments to our NIPA 2030 goal in our annual board meeting in March. So exciting, this is kind of like a little bit of appetizer, a little teaser for the NIPA 2030. We're excited. We are, we look forward to present that to you. I believe that NIPA again will be a leading entity, not just in the state, but in the country in terms of confronting and challenging and meeting the demands of the climate crisis. Going back to last year as part of my year-end review, you will see, as Adam Barsky, our CFO, makes his report, that we have met our financial metrics and exceeded the goals that we have put in that, in that bucket. When it comes to net income, we consistently meet that goal. Our fixed cost coverage ratio is way above our requirement. Same thing with debt service coverage ratio. And those are the metrics that rating agencies look at. We are also very strong from a balance sheet perspective. Our balance sheet leverage is very healthy. Our cash flow from operations has always been healthy, and so we are well, well, we are in a very strong footing from a financial perspective and a lot of capacity to deploy and meet our strategic plan 2030. While not part of our strategic plan, it wasn't part of NIPA 2020, it's not part of NIPA 2030. Events in Puerto Rico and U.S. Virgin Island required us to provide mutual assistance. This is a longstanding principle among states where we have compacts to help each other in terms of emergencies. In the case of Puerto Rico hurricanes and, more recently, earthquakes and hurricanes in the U.S. Virgin Islands, there are, you know, a lot of Puerto Ricans in our state. Our governor has always said that they are part of the family of New York, and when a family member needs help, we will go and help. And that's what we've been doing at NIPA, also helping our colleagues at PREPA, the Puerto Rican Electric Power Authority, and U.S. Virgin Islands Water and Power Authority. We are helping them in really three buckets: grid stabilization, make sure that their grid is stable, we're helping them put applications and plans for federal funding from FEMA and from the Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. And also, we are just providing direction and roadmap similar to what we do with NIPA. You know, we have NIPA 2020, now NIPA 2030. We're also helping the leadership of both utilities and their board to put their own PREPA 2030 and USVI WAPA 2030. So those are the kind of help that we're doing, and we will continue to do so. I really want to thank Joe Kessler and his team, Sal Rojas, Alex Echeverria, and others who have been instrumental in this effort. But overall, 2019 really has been great for NIPA. We've either met, in most cases exceeded, our key performance indicators and metrics. It's the culmination of our NIPA 2020, and the team finished strong and achieved the goals of those strategic initiatives. We're now well-positioned, coming from a position of strength, to launch and implement NIPA 2030. That is my report.
Well, kudos. God, I speak, you know, for the entire board. Another outstanding year for you and your team and the organization at large, and we're proud of what you're doing each and every day, the impacts that you're having. Our reach, as you just recapped, extends beyond our state boundaries, but given our primary focus, the operational strength of the organization's been a longstanding competency, but very impressive to see in recent years, as you and the team have progressively leaned into that position of strength to really stretch yourselves and frankly, you know, the resources and capacity state to, you know, much higher levels. So kudos, and we're all the more excited about, you know, what the next decade will bring, and glad we wrapped up the last one in such a strong way. So very, very well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Anything else for Gil? Okay, thanks a lot, Gil. Next up, wanted to, I think, Subhagya, are you up next?
Yes.
You know, it's been a bit since, as a board, we focused on risk oversight and, you know, broader-based organizational enterprise-wide risk management, so wanted to take a few minutes. You guys are doing a lot to further broaden and deepen your capabilities and competencies, and so, you know, want to give you the opportunity to bring everyone up to speed a bit.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, trustees, and NIPA staff, as well as everybody else watching.
Okay, you're giving us all reports. We appreciate that, Subhagya. And the financials are up to speed, and we just finished canals. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Any other questions for anything that's been presented today?
What risk management presentation always?
There's clearly risk in making this presentation, Subhagya, so.
Thank you, yep.
We appreciate the risk management that we just employed. You got to fill up the screen now?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay.
Got it?
Here comes Daniele, the ultimate risk manager.
Now you have to put it in slideshow.
Slideshow, let's clear the area, Subhagya.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, we got it, all right. All right, Subhagya, we're going to take it from the top again. As you can see, it's been a while since we had a presentation for risk management.
Yes, it's been a while, but thank you.
It used to be bubble charts, and now we're up to spider web.
So, yeah, it says, so what you see is the, you know, we just completed a deep dive assessment for NIPA, and this shows the 2018 results versus 2019 results based on the deep dive. So the spiders that you see is a combination of impact one to five scale and likelihood one to five scale.
Subhagya, give us some context, because, I mean, when you were last up here, you were giving us bubble charts and big bubbles and little bubbles and upper right quadrants and all the rest of that. Why don't you just give us a little bit of context on the evolution of from there to here?
So the bubble chart was kind of, you know, we were showing the bubble charts and relative risks and all that. We wanted to really make it more sort of dynamic in terms of how we are progressing with regard to our risk mitigation strategies and controls in place. So NIPA is doing a lot of work. We just want to be able to reflect that. So as you can see, the outer line shows the maximum rating scoring possible for risks, five by five. So impact five, highest rating would be 25, then we go down from there. We have a key there which sort of, you know, we do track not just financial impact, we track reputational impact, regulatory compliance impact, as well as safety impact. But this is just how these different lines, colors are set in the spider check.
But the spokes are what you've identified, we've identified as our key risks.
They are top risks, yes.
Top risk, right? That's the spokes around, you know, the wheel, so there's eight or 10 spokes, eight or 10 key risks.
Right.
The most significant of which is disruptive innovation, to use that as an example, right? Okay.
Right.
And this measures where we, NIPA is, where.
This is us.
This is an assessment of NIPA.
This is an assessment of NIPA, where we're projecting the risk to be. So risk is forward-looking, so we're projecting based on the impact and the likelihood of the event, where we want to, where we'd like to be, or where we see ourselves today.
And the combination of how we've moved from the blue to the red is a combination of the risks themselves and how they're evolving, but more how we're better managing and mitigating risk, I'm assuming.
That's correct. So we look at, we look at internal factors, external factors, external environment, as well as strategic push that NIPA is making. So all three, risk is kind of three-legged factors that impact the risk scoring. So if.
So commodity market volatility, our hedging programs, et cetera.
That's correct.
Have brought down our inherent risk level, there are managed risks.
The residual risk, yeah, right.
Reduction, what we're doing to manage exposures there. The risks still remain, but we've just better managed it.
Yes, so these are all still very high-risk. We did that validation with a cross-functional set of groups, with the responders, with the RMC that we have, and then we proceeded with the deep dive, and these are the results of the scoring.
Okay.
So what really changed, you know, you can see, if you compare the blue to the red area, we have made progress in terms of our risk posture, if you will.
Except in the area of, if I'm reading this correctly, we've now, unless the red is sitting on top, overlaps the blue, the disruptive innovation example.
Yes.
Is this a realization that this has become a risk that we have, we've determined has a greater impact on NIPA, and therefore, our positioning is further out, or we're not, we've evaluated that there's an area that we need more improvement than some of the other risk areas? Am I reading this correctly?
That's correct. So I talked to you about the internal, external, and strategic factors. So based on the external environment, the disruptive technology, we feel that there are too many unknowns, unknowns there. It's moving very fast. So we're doing our best, you know, we just set up the disruptive innovation workforce to sort of manage, monitor these risks better, but there is only so much you could do, given the pace of technology that's.
And this is where we think we're the weakest.
Right.
In this area.
Right. I won't, yeah.
I mean, it's hard to use the word weakness.
Right, right.
There's inherent exposure that we can't control.
Right.
Disruptive innovation is out of our control.
Right, but this is an evaluation of where we think our strength or our ability to mitigate these kinds of risks. Unless I'm reading it.
It's an evaluation of our exposure.
Right.
I would argue that, you know, disruptive innovation, you know, unless you've captured all of the innovation, unless you have all of the disruptor, disruptive innovators working for NIPA, you're always going to be exposed.
Right, I get it, but what I'm saying is there's, there's an evaluation of what are the risks that are out there, and then there's an evaluation of our ability to respond to those risks, or our comfort level and how we've assessed where we are.
That's exactly correct.
So what I took this to mean is where we think we are in addressing.
Right.
These risks that we've.
Right, right.
To the extent they can be addressed or mitigated and managed.
There are relative, but there are still, all of them are top risks. They're, and then, as you can see, we added two risks, evolving risks, data governance and third-party risk. These risks have not been scored yet through a deep dive process because we're still, we've done a lot of work on this, we've, you know, developed the framework that's been, you know, the response has been identified, we've formed committees, we've had people to manage these two risks, but we'll do the full-scale risk assessment in the mid-year, and then we'll come back to you with that.
I think Tracy's point, we've shared it in the past, it'd be helpful for us to better understand what an acceptable level of risk is. What's our target?
Yes.
Risk management score, if you will. Disruptive technology or innovation, you know, maybe whatever, what's your number there, 15, 20, whatever that is, 15, maybe that's the target, maybe that's the best we can do.
Right, right.
So we don't want to deploy resources to manage a risk that we can't influence.
Feedback is well taken, Mr. Chairman, yeah.
So how we can better identify the target.
Yep.
Score for each one of those risks, and what are we doing to improve and work within that?
We will, we're working on that, the RMC.
You can add that to the spider web.
Yes, we will, we will add that. We're working with the RMC. Every risk sponsor is going to be their, the risk, their own at the RMC, every meeting in the RMC. This will set the targets through the RMC validation, that if that's the collectively great target.
So what's our takeaway as a board? Should we feel better sitting here today than a year ago, that you and the team and the organization at large is better managing and mitigating risk?
The team is definitely, the NIPA team is definitely, the risk awareness has increased significantly, and we've put more and more controls and more mitigative strategies in place. So that's, this is a reflection of that. I feel, you know, so we do, we take actions on the front end to prevent risks. We manage risk as it goes on a regular basis, then we also have a backstop to sort of react to the risks in terms of insurance, in terms of, you had a lot about enterprise resiliency, those, all those factors drive the risk score. So cyber, for example, we have cybersecurity insurance, we have cybersecurity committee that reports to the RMC. If the board has a cybersecurity, cyber risk committee, all those are factored into our risk assessment.
And the fact that you've added like data governance and third-party risk indicates this is an evolving analysis that as things come into your scope.
Right.
You add them to the risk.
Yes, yes. So the two that we've added are the data governance, third-party risk, and we're monitoring the situation every time, and we will be, you know, constantly adding and editing this list.
Okay.
Right? So these are little more details about the third-party risk and the data governance risk that what we have put in place. I'm not going to go into much details into this. We've put a lot of effort in terms of, you know, getting the enterprise governance risk audit tool in place. So we've already completed the implementation of the enterprise risk management module, audit. You've already heard from Angela about the audit module completion. So it really helps us to improve our organizational risk culture and maturity with this tool. It's going to be a lot more data-driven. We can, we, you know, give you reports on key risk indicators on a periodic basis, and the risk dashboard is going to be significantly improved with this tool.
It's a significant investment that you've made, you're building up and building this system out?
Yes, so this system, I'm going to show you on the other next chart. So this is, you know, we have a.
Significant change management plan in place.
We have now the tool, the platform has been built, but we're going to be adding modules, so we're going to add a more specific controls module, and then the business resiliency module to the platform. So the platform has several modules, so we have implemented risk management, enterprise risk, and audit modules so far. And then there's a plan to drive this education, and then the, we'll have DTO, asset performance and project management put in the system by mid-April. The remaining views we're targeting to complete by Q1 2021. And these, these are stakeholders, we have, we're going to have more discussion with the business owners to really finalize this timeline, the internal timeline.
So this is, you're on the front end of, this is a system you've bought and are now customizing or working with the vendor to tailor and customize to us?
Right. So this, what this does, this actually is a consistent language of risk, everything risk.
To use across the organization, and you're on the front end of it?
Right.
Okay, and so it'll take the year or more than the year to fully build it out, fully implement it?
Fully implement it, yes, because we want to be careful about, you know, making sure everybody that uses in the business units is absolutely comfortable using it.
Is this a tool that, when we look at the spider web a year from now, you would expect would enable us to even better mitigate our risks and exposures, or is this just a tool to be a little more efficient with, you know, the overall risk management practices?
A bit of both, Mr. Chairman. It is definitely going to help us manage our risk management program better, because we'll have a lot more transparency, visibility into the entire corporation. But also, because we can manage it better, we can also see some of the dashboard reporting. We should expect to have a better controls environment, and then that, that area and the spider chat should shrink.
So as I understand, this is a way for you to make sure that you're filtering a risk view throughout the enterprise, that everyone understands as they go on, whether it's legal, whether it's operation or commercial, that they're evaluating the risks that are inherent in the business they do, and so you're putting it into this platform or framework or governance structure so that everyone, and you can evaluate where we are overall as an enterprise, where our risks are.
The power of this really, it's almost real. So, and all the interdependencies of the various business units are captured, so we can do a lot of data analytics, and the goal really is to predict if something is trending, not the right way, we can act on it right away, rather than, you know, than too late.
And just knowing where your risks are and what they are.
Correct, correct.
Exactly.
At any given point of time, yes.
I mean, to me, this is something that we ought to add to, you know, finance committee agenda. You know, Adam and Subhagya are very much ham and egg in this here. Obviously, risk management, the risk environment is, this to us as a board, and you want to ensure, it's great to see this reach across the organization, so it'll be common language focus, understanding. And, yeah, we want to make sure we're monitoring implementation here, that this stays on track and gets due priority across the organization, and I would suggest with each. And I would suggest with each, you know, our standard agenda item and rolls up there so that, you know, it's, you know, appropriately, you know, monitored by us.
Agreed. I think what we're going to do is have a standing item on every committee, a finance committee to look at a different topic, but also give an update in terms of the rollout of the program.
That's.
But as you were saying, part of this is going to be building out a risk culture through your organization. So everybody's looking at it and speaking about it the same way and understanding the scoring. But a lot of this has to do with also building out this culture. Everybody's a risk manager and everybody has responsibility.
Which I'd like to think, you know, we're, you know, released around the track on. I mean, there's a focus and a perspective there. But yeah, this just is taking it to the next level and creates a level of consistency that just amps up the effectiveness, so, okay?
Yep. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions?
Subhag.
Thank you.
Thank you, Subhag. I appreciate you giving us a preview of everybody else's presentation. Thank you. All right, Adam, you're up next.
I didn't have to do mine.
Yeah, well, you know, it's up to you. You can just recap.
Okay, just a snapshot in terms of where we are as of today. We had a, a close, call it a, sort of a hard close on, on Friday, so the numbers are, are pretty fresh, but just want to, just sort of advise everyone, these are unaudited numbers based on our internal system. So we go through an audit process with KPMG and we'll be coming back to the board, you know, in March for the acceptance of the full audited financials, but this is where we stand as Gil said.
So these numbers are different than the board material we originally received since this was.
Do you agree?
Right, the original board, right, so just clarify, the original board material was an 11 plus one, so it was our November plus our forecast. The difference in the bottom line is less than $500,000, so we're pretty close to what we were forecasting. Some pieces moved between categories, but overall the bottom line was pretty much on target with what we were forecasting and nothing really major has changed other than the, the same themes we were talking about earlier in, in previous meetings in terms of the energy margins from generation were underperforming because of the energy price compression in the market, our transmission revenue outperformed and non-utility, I think it's a, it's a really good, you know, kudos to commercial operations and energy efficiency. They've well outperformed their revenue target by $6.8 million, almost $7 million. So it shows that, that, that program, that, that program is.
That's about time.
No, I think it's real, the, the, and yeah, so.
It's about time though, it is about time. I don't know anything to do with that. It's definitely about time.
I think we definitely see sort of, as Sarah was saying, the, of the, of the business getting to that point where, you know, it's going to break even, potentially do better over, over time, but certainly, you know, help us meet all of our goals with our, with our customers. Operating expenses, as Gil mentioned, also up slightly, mostly driven by the pension in OPEB. New accounting standards for OPEB require a different actuarial calculation, how the expense is done. But just to, you know, remind people that we do have an OPEB fund. So our liability, which is around $600 million, is completely funded. Not very many organizations in our category can stay such a thing. So we've pretty much have that liability taken care of off the balance sheet, but we show the annual expense, but a lot of it has to do with the performance in the stock market, as Gil mentioned, from the prior year. What I would say now, looking forward, is that the fund performed incredibly well this year, as did the state pension fund. So I think that with a lot of certainty, we would think that our forecast and next year's budget for OPEB and pension should be, should be right on because of the performance of the funds. So we won't have that sort of reoccur. Those are sort of the big stories. The other one, as we mentioned, as we get into the reimagine phase, but the canals from an operating EBITDA standpoint performed under budget slightly, but stayed within budget. Obviously, we'll be working with even his team as the reimagine gets rolled out in terms of making sure that, that that is coordinated. And other than that, everything else sort of holds from where things were.
So the trends continue.
The trends continue.
No big surprises. Okay?
And even into this year, we, when we did project our, our margins and our prices, things have even since we made those projections in November, continued to be somewhat depressed. Some of that is weather related, you know, we have a warmer than expected winter, so that's kind of depressed things somewhat. And as, you know, the natural gas market continues to be, you know, flooded and oversupplied and keeping prices down. So those factors really haven't changed too much.
Okay.
Any other?
Is that it?
Questions?
You're done? That's a wrap?
So far.
Okay.
Exactly, that's what you're hoping.
All right. Thanks, Adam.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Joe.
Thank you, Chairman, staff and the public at large. I probably have one of the most boring and yet one of the most exciting reports. As you can see, we're all agreeing for all of our performance metrics, including our infamous dart rage. Great credit to the staff of IBEW, UWA, and you've seen in your consent materials, we actually are under agreement with UWA for an extension as well. They've been very collaborative, everybody from the top down on, on working on that. Look, it's 15 total incidents for the year, which is 15 more than we want, but really in our industry, that's a, that's a great standard, so we're very proud of that. Essentially, that ends my report. I will speak, it's a little bit to the item that Gil had in yellow in operations, because the books close on Friday, we're going to look at that a little bit closer on some accruals and do some investigation following this meeting to find out what's, what the real meat and potatoes around that.
You're a baron, Joe.
Yeah, I'll get into the bottom of it. So that's, the closing being so soon, we usually get a variance report and we're looking into that right now. So if there's any other questions for me, that really ends my report.
And you'll come back later because we've got a number of key projects, but.
Yeah, under the, under the finance committee report, what we'll do is we'll bring Trish Lombardi back up to reorient everybody, the entire board on, on those items.
Well, again, kudos to you and the team for all the busting. Yeah, it's great to see, you know, tremendous outcomes and obviously in terms of generation and transmission, you know, that's foundational. If we don't do that well, we can't do the rest of the, you know, the good work that we do. So kudos to you and, you know, your entire team, so.
Great job, Adam.
Well done, good work. Hey, Sarah, it's about time, I heard. So still got this Christmas tree thing going, at least in my materials.
I do, I do. We're trying to keep it, keep it varied.
Well, she turned it all green, but you know.
She still has the Christmas tree.
Okay.
I do.
I do, you're welcome. Yes, so, you know, it's the same story that you've heard in the past several months, right, in terms of the market prices. Adam touched on it as well, relative to gas prices, which tend to be the marginal units in, in the market. And so if those are depressed, the electricity prices are depressed as well. And so even though we had higher volume coming into our assets and to be generated, there wasn't the commensurate value captured as a result of the depressed prices. So that translates into the merchant gross margin, which was below the target value. Let's remember that this target value is a, is a snapshot in time when we take the market forwards, when the budget is set. And so we are with, even though we did not hit the number, we are within the parameters and bands that we set as part of our risk framework and we actively hedged and preserved $19 million of value as a result of our, of our hedging and risk management strategy. And for that, I'd like to thank Jenny Liu and her hedging and the team there that, that transacts on a daily basis is going out to the market and trying to preserve the floor for NIPA. When it comes to 2020, I think Adam intimated, we had, we set an aggressive target again for the merchant gross margin, particularly since that's the one that's most volatile and also provides us upside as well as some potential downside. In looking at that, we're working closely with finance and risk to look at what, what we need to provide to the authority, not only to support our AA credit rating, but the financial investments that we want to conduct in order to support the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, the, as well as our Vision 2030 strategy, which Eve will present at future meeting. And within those, within that framework, we're revisiting the tiers and the bands and will be enacting a new, a new hedging strategy going forward, which will essentially be balancing value with, with volumetric hedging and returning to the, the approach that we had been taking for the last few, the prior, for the last few years. So we'll look forward to presenting that at the, at the next meeting. Again, our fundamental mission is to support the economic growth and competitiveness of New York State and, and we continue to actively provide our low-cost hydro power to various customers across the state in exchange for commitments and capital and jobs. We are working very closely with some very large industrials and, and, and big names along with the Empire State Development Fund in order to attract those companies to our state and to have them set up operations. So I hope over the course of this year, we'll be able to share some of those results with you. On, on energy efficiency, as was highlighted, I'd like to recognize Keith and the team. That's Sangita, Joe Rendy, Dave Work, Dom Luce and his team, Rich Smith as well for, for really embracing the focus on accelerating our revenues and maintaining our cost structure and coming well, well above budget in terms of the revenues that we're getting from the Clean Energy Solutions team. It's a, it's a team effort, a lot of moving parts and both the front office and the BD people, all the way to the project managers and the contract managers contribute to that. So even though our operating expenses are a little bit above, that's commensurate with the fact that we really were accelerating and doing a lot more work, pulling in more projects and executing them accordingly.
So just a question on the, the non-utility revenue around the energy efficiency, because that is, I mean, that's impressive.
Yeah.
It's almost 50% over what you'd planned or forecasted. And is that largely from, obviously, we don't, you know, we're not focused on pricing, but going out and getting more customers, a more aggressive marketing strategy? What, what have you done and is that something you're continuing over the next year? So we can expect to see this go into 2020?
Yes, well, I mean, as, as you saw when we requested the funding for the energy efficiency program, the portfolio of projects, our, our portfolio, a pipeline has really accelerated and increased over the last several years. Essentially, we're come, we had the highest number of contracts signed in, in the last year, well above $300 million. And so it's more aggressive sales of our products as well as looking at streamlining our delivery and, and a large focus on costs as well. We're implementing new delivery models and always exploring those. So we're using design build, which is looking to accelerate the, the, the delivery essentially. So rather than looking at with the engineers at 30, 60, 90 design and bidding it out, we're doing upfront design and then bidding it out. And so that's also shortening the procurement cycle. All of this requires us to educate and work with our customers because it's a very strong trust, change management, even with them, because they've been used to working in a certain way. So those are just a couple of the examples. In addition, there's been a big focus on our newer service offerings, which are more capital light. And that comes to our solar plus storage advisory services as well as street lighting. Those can move a little bit more quickly and we're trying to have that have a greater share of the overall portfolio contributed. So it's, it's a number of things. And when I presented in the past, kind of on the break even plan and the overall view for the business, there's no single bullet, silver bullet. It's really a multitude of top line and, and cost activities. And this may be the last time that you see this commercial ops report in this format because looking to evolve it and at the, at the March meeting, have a, have a new and improved, right, report that can both highlight, you know, everything that we're doing across commercial operations because there are a lot of groups doing great things and I want to make sure that you hear the progress that's being made in helping us meet our mission and objectives. Secondly, the CLCPA has us have new targets, that would be the Vision 2030 strategy. And so an evolution of, of this that speaks a little bit more to the impact we're having and, and the progress we're making will, will, will come at the next meeting.
And I agree with the chairman, that would be great because having a breakdown like the discussion we just had about what impacted the, you know, over, I mean, you know, your successful accomplishment of going beyond what you targeted on the non-utility, a breakdown of those driving that kind of growth for you.
Yeah.
You can see that would be great.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Well, you know, how to diminish the outcomes with operating expenses being over budget when you're executing more efficiently than planned and margins are better and all the rest of that.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, how, what metrics we use and all the optics of it.
Right, no, so, no, exactly, there's a, there's a revamping of that and each, each business unit has its own focus, right? In some cases, like safe for evolve, it's really getting the charging infrastructure built for something like NIM. It's ensuring that with the amount of data that we're bringing into the platform because that has significant value. So they will, they will of course be financial metrics still, right? Because we have a bottom line, but hopefully we'll be able to also share with you really where we're keeping our eye on the prize for these different business lines.
And just how we define success, because frankly, economic development, I'm sure if you were giving your story, you'd start with economic development. Well, there's no colors there, you know, because we don't set, you know, we don't define success and all the rest of that. So just how we rethink that to what really matters. So, and in your case, starting from the customer and the like, so. Okay, anything else for Sarah? All right, thanks very much, Sarah. Oh, you're still going.
Yeah, I'm still going. So this is.
Might be.
It's okay. That's it for the commercial report. So just to give some context on the AC proceeding, over the last several years, the New York State has done analysis into the aging transmission infrastructure, the need for, for investment. That started with the STARS report in 2008 and then accelerated under Governor Cuomo with the 2012 Energy Highway Blueprint. As a result of that, in late 2015, the New York Public Service Commission ordered through a NISO public policy transmission need, a request to relieve congestion in a certain part of the state in the Upnissenee and Central East Transmission Interfaces, known as the AC Transmission Proceeding. Within this, NIPA participated by partnering with LS Power. We submitted our proposals and were selected in 2019 for, by the NISO Board for Segment A. Segment B was awarded to New York Transco. The project that we were awarded is worth approximately $750 million in aggregate. Two things to really highlight here, one is a very strong example of public-private partnerships. And I think that's something that, again, we, we are focusing on in the business and project development team going forward to ensure that we're bringing the best of the public and private together to support the state. Additionally, it is a good example of our growth focus in transmission. We run a third of the transmission grid in New York State and we want to continue to diversify our revenue sources with stable and, and significant contributions to the bottom line. And to that end, this project also supports that. You'll see the line here, it more or less runs from Utica to Schenectady. And within the project, NIPA retains the right of an option for 37.5% investment, which equates to approximately $280 million. The request to execute this option will be formally come to you likely in mid to late 2020. You have already approved the funding for this investment through 2023. It's been included in the approved budget and financial plan. Some of the progress that we've made over the last several months, one, we've filed the Article VII, which is a tremendous effort by cross, cross-functional effort with utility ops, but also with Mark Malone and his team in, in licensing and the development group. We filed along with support from Legal as well as Scott Teneman's group, the rate recovery through FERC, where we received rate incentives and an approved rate for 9.95% return, which includes a risk adder. The projected revenue that we're anticipating for this project is, when it is completed, is $25 million at the revenue, gross revenue level and $15 million at the net income level. So again, a significant contribution to NIPA's bottom line.
Which we'll see when, starting when?
That will be coming in, in 2023.
So the build-outs through '23?
Yeah.
And the revenue uplift of $25 million?
It will be.
Is in '24 then?
Yeah, it will be starting in that year. Yeah, it will be starting in that year. Yes. So specifically, I'm coming to you not for a funding request, but because as part of our obligation under the NISO tariff, we have to enter into a development agreement, along with LS Power and the NISO, that imposes additional obligations on NIPA related to the pursuit of the project. Specifically, it outlines a detailed project description, schedule of key milestones, and provisions, other provisions, you know, obligating the authority to execute on this project. And so we're coming, we're requesting that you approve NIPA entering into this three-party joint development agreement between the NISO, LS Power, and, and ourselves.
So no additional financial exposure?
No.
Because we've already approved
We've already approved it. But again, this is just
This formalizes the agreement.
Yeah, it formalizes the agreement, has additional concrete obligations that NIPA has to support in constructing the project.
But they're obligations that we foresee, you know, we've
That we've foreseen, right, exactly. Yes. So this is much more of a formality. But again, because it's signing the authority up and binding it even more legally within specific parameters, we're coming to the board.
And so to rephrase Tracy's question, so as you bound this up legally and formalized this, there's nothing that came out of that effort that wasn't anticipated when we initially approved and authorized this a year or more ago?
Yeah, no, there are no red flags. It's really detailing the project that's going to be constructed.
Playing out as we anticipate.
It is. And failure to execute the agreement would have us in violation of the, of the tariff. And so we, we want to make sure that we meet the deadline, which is the 5th of February.
Just a buzzer beater.
Yeah.
Okay.
We like those.
I would move.
I have a motion to approve. Second, any other questions for Sarah on the buzzer beater? Okay. All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Buzzer beater carried.
Because there weren't any red flags or any issue, it's not really a last-minute thing. We could have brought it to you in December. But you, there was a lot on the agenda then.
Say that today.
Working on that scorecard, Sarah. We'll see how it works. Okay, I'd give this one a yellow and I'm certainly a green. Anyway, okay. All right, well done, Sarah. Appreciate it. Good work. Okay. Alluded a little bit ago to Finance Committee. We had a lengthy substantive, significant meeting a week or so ago. So first up on our string of committee reports is Tracy McKibben, who chaired that discussion.
Great, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the Finance Committee met on January 24th, and we had a number of items we discussed, including, you know, some very large capital expenditure items that we want before the board for adoption. There are two presentations that we want to have. The first is by Eves Knoll, SVP, Strategy and Corporate Development, who'll present the Reimagine the Canals item for the agenda. And this is, as Gil mentioned in his report, is how we're thinking about the transformation of this asset for the, for the authority. And then followed by Eves will be Trish Lombardi, our VP of Project Management. And she's going to present on one of our other large capital expenditures around the replacement of the transmission structures, the SmartPath Reliability Project. So, Eves, you're going to go up first? You're up first? Yeah, great.
And large is quantified as plus or minus $300 million.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Just so we've defined large.
Safely large.
Yeah.
Good morning, Chairman.
Eves, good morning.
Trustees, Gil, EMC, fellow presenters. I wanted to start today because I'm, I'm here to update you on an exciting initiative that has been now on our agenda for a couple of years now. I'm actually, we're actually very thrilled that the governor formally announced it recently in his 2020 State of the State speech. Stretching from Albany to Buffalo, it is arguable that no infrastructure project over the last
Starts from Buffalo to Albany. The water starts in Buffalo, water flows downhill.
Ask him where he lives.
Buffalo to Albany. There's no water in Albany. All right, they might be underwater from time to time.
Fair, fair, fair.
Clarity is important.
But nonetheless, the canal
I want to keep you in the green, Eves.
No infrastructure project of the last two centuries is more responsible for New York State's rise as a state and New York City's rise as a global capital than the Erie Canal. The Erie Canal has been a treasured state asset since its opening in 1825 and the responsibility of NIPA for the past three years. Our goal is to reimagine it in a variety of 21st century purposes. And to do that, we are asking the Board of Trustees to approve two items. An investment of $300 million over five years for the Reimagine the Canals Initiative, and an increase of $30 million to the Authority's 2020 capital budget to fund the initiative. In keeping with longstanding policy, we'll come back to the board for specific project authorization.
Is the 30 part of the 300?
Yes, it is. Let's begin by providing you with a brief overview of the Reimagine the Canal activities. As you know, NIPA assumed responsibility for the management of the New York State Canal in 2017. Shortly after that, the Authority launched our Reimagine the Canals competition to solicit ideas as to how the iconic asset could serve new audiences in the wake of a demise in commercial shipping. After receiving 145 applications from nine countries, the Authority announced two competition winners in October of 2018. The Erie Armada, a festival and boat race in the Finger Lakes region, and the canal-side Pocket Neighborhood, also on the historic Erie Canal. To further examine ideas expressed in the shortlisted submissions, Governor Cuomo formed a task force. It focused both on the ideas to promote economic development and ideas relating to increasing resilience along the Erie Spine. From ecological restoration to economic regeneration to agricultural irrigation to flood mitigation, the task force studied a wide array of challenges and opportunities facing canal communities. Their report serves as the foundation for the governor's recommendation in his 2020 State of the State address that the NIPA Board of Directors approved $300 million investment over the next five years. The plan is to reimagine the Erie Canal by adaptively reusing the canal's systems, water control, infrastructure, to not only create more recreational and tourist activities along the canal, but also to mitigate flooding, enhance irrigation, and restore compromised wetlands. Today, the Erie Canal is operated in a way suitable for large vessels. Tomorrow, it should be operated to benefit a variety of end-users, including small boaters, farmers, floodplain residents and businesses, local communities, and the broader ecosystem of upstate New York. More specifically, our plan is to invest $100 million in economic development, funding for the reuse of infrastructure in communities along the canal. In addition, there will be $65 million investment in measures to help prevent ice jams and related ice flooding in the Mohawk Valley. This effort will include deploying Icebreaker, developing an ice jam monitoring system, and retrofitting the Visher Ferry Power Dam. The remaining $135 million of the dam's funding would be available to allocate to study and address resilience issues issued by the reimagine task force, including measures to mitigate the spread of invasive species, irrigate Western New York, and reduce summer flooding and ecosystem restoration. Within the $100 million, the economic development and initial $25 million will be allocated to five projects. The first, the Brockport Loop project in Monroe County will connect SUNY College at Brockport to the Empire State Trail and the Village of Brockport through the transformation of Canal Guard Gate into the pedestrian bridge and overlook, with supporting grant from, of $2 million from the Ralph Wilson Foundation. Celebrating iconic infrastructure will involve the interactive illumination of the canal's movable dam, initially in the Mohawk Valley, which will celebrate the canal's heritage and its history as an engineering marvel. The new whitewater destination at the north end of Cuyahoga Lake, near Seneca Falls, will rely on existing water control infrastructure to construct an active water sports course. The fourth project, and the winner of the Reimagine the Canals competition, a canal-side Pocket Neighborhood, will be developed by Madison County in central New York. The fifth, the historic Guy Park Manor on the Mohawk River in Amsterdam, will be reborn as a hospitality destination and a pedestrian bridge constructed across the canal. Reimagine the Canal initiatives' next steps will include mobilizing the team, including creating a new unit within NIPA to lead the initiative forward. Specifically, the unit will direct planning, provide a technical oversight, and engage public, in public outreach. It will leverage the expertise of other state agencies, such as the Department of Environment and Conservation, Parks and Recreation, Agriculture and Markets, Empire State Development, and the Department of State. We will continue outreach, education, and discussions with key stakeholders. We'll also initiate project management activities within NIPA. We've already begun and had meetings with Joe Kessler and his team. We are excited about the new third iteration of the Erie Canal, and I know you are too. No longer do we ask, what is the canal for, but rather, who is the canal for? And the answer is simple. Today's canal system will be repurposed to benefit communities along the waterway. Our goal is to use this asset in a new and exciting way to support future generations of New Yorkers, as well as visitors to the great state. I respectfully request the Board authorize the investment of $300 million over five years for the Reimagine the Canals Initiative, and approve an increase of $30 million to the Authority's 2020 capital budget to fund the Reimagine Canal Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Eves. We had a very extensive discussion in the Finance Committee meeting around this. I don't know, without any additional questions, I'd like to ask for a motion from the Finance Committee based on this recommendation to authorize the investment of $300 million over five years for the Reimagine Canal Initiative and the increase of $30 million for the Authority's 2020 capital budget.
So move.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any other questions? And Judge Dennis Tony, you weren't, you know, able to participate there.
I've been kept in the loop.
You're up to speed and
Tony, are you comfortable?
I am. No, I had, I've, I've been briefed.
Great, good.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things there. The initial, well, obviously, you know, we're more than thrilled and, you know, excited to, you know, be part of this and leading the effort and enabling it. Great to see a handful of projects coming out of the gate early. Great to see Wilson Foundation jumping on because our ability to leverage private sector, you know, becomes all the more important, whether that's under a trust or whatever form. But the opportunity to, as I say, do the loaves and fishes routine and make this even better than it's going to be with our $300 millions, very exciting. So, yeah, proud to be associated with it. So well done. And it's all in the execution, but, you know, excited to get going.
Yeah, we're very excited. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
No question.
Thanks. Trish, you're up next. There you are.
Nice job.
Just get that Buffalo to Albany thing.
Thank you, Tracy McKibben. Good afternoon, everybody. Right? We're just after noon here. So again, my name is Patricia Lombardi. I'm the Vice President of Project Management, and I'm here today on behalf of Utility Ops to present the Construction Services Contract Award for the Moses Adirondack SmartPath Project. So today, we're requesting the Board of Trustees approve a Construction Services Contract in the amount of $314 million to Michael's Power. On January 24th, the Finance Committee adopted a recommendation to approve this award. The scope of the project includes replacing approximately 78 miles of wooden structures on Moses Adirondack I and II Transmission Lines with new steel monopoles, single-circuit monopoles capable of supporting 345 KV transmission, but will operate at 230. This project has been brought before the Finance Committee and the Board previously. In November 2019, the Finance Committee adopted a recommendation to approve the remaining capital expenditures to complete this project, and that was subsequently approved by the Board in December. At that time, the Finance Committee was also briefed on the status of the bid evaluation for that contract award, which culminates today. The total project estimate remains at $483.8 million, as previously communicated. To date, the Board has approved all the capital expenditures to complete this job, and we've spent approximately $52 million to date. Due to the magnitude and complexity of this project, and NIPA really recognizing that we needed to partner with really the top players in the industry, we issued an RFQ, a Request for Qualification, April 2015. Fifteen submissions were received and thoroughly reviewed by a cross-functional team. From that 15, six suppliers were deemed qualified, and an RFQ was issued back in September 2018. Subsequently, five proposals were received in November 2018. And of those five, three qualified contractors were awarded personal services contracts in accordance with the Authority's Procurement Guidelines and EAPs to support the development of the Environmental Management and Construction Plan, which is part of the Article VII permitting process. Again, this is detailed really in the written material. In June 2019, a post-bid addendum was issued to the RFP to those three same vendors, and in October 2019, their proposals were received. The project team again got together to review these proposals. They reviewed it amongst other criteria, based on cost, MWBE and SDVOB participation, technical commercial requirements, as well as relevant work experience, including safety records. Due to the large spread in pricing that we received from the vendors, as you can see, the evaluation team spent an extensive amount of time with the two lowest-priced vendors to really review their proposals in detail. They looked at the team that they put together. They looked at their risk models that were built into the pricing, and really their overall plan for execution. At the end of that evaluation, the committee did land on Michael's. They are the lowest-priced and best-value vendor. They submitted a well-defined, detailed, efficient proposal. They're a full-service infrastructure contractor with over 6,000 employees, approaching $3 billion annually in revenue. They're a well-established company, and they have extensive experience in site works and experience with Article VII projects in New York State. They will be self-performing a majority of the work, which really does set them apart from some of the other suppliers, including a majority of the foundation work. The project execution plan, work management plans, QAQC, schedules, really all aspects of their proposal, for those, they received the highest score from the committee, and for them, it really made them the clear choice for award. So following this extensive evaluation process, staff recommends a win, hour in the amount of $294 million, with an additional $20 million to manage scope and schedule risk over the five-year period. So it brings the total authorization to $314 million. In accordance with the Authority's policies and procedures, a limited notice to proceed in the amount of $6 million was issued in December to Michael's to really get the ball rolling and procure long lead materials so we could keep this project on schedule. At this time, we're still on target. Construction is scheduled to start in March. So thank you very much. I'll take any other questions.
Thank you, Trish. And we discussed this again in the Finance Committee meeting, especially around the fact that this was the lowest bid.
Yes.
Your team and the cost agency review was comfortable that they had, they would be able to deliver even though they were lowest cost. And so that was an important part of the discussion.
Yes.
But Judge, since you weren't there, and Dennis, if there are any, Tony, if there are any additional questions that you have regarding this?
I have none, no.
Tony?
No, I'm good.
Okay, great. If there are no other questions, I'll, the Finance Committee will recommend this to the full board. I seek a motion to approve the award of a five-year competitively bid contract to Michael's Power in the amount of $294,274,993 to construct the Moses Adirondack SmartPath Reliability Project, and an additional $20 million in funding to manage scope and schedule change risk over the five-year period.
And I'll take that as the motion. So all we need is a second, second for that. Thanks, Judge.
Mr. Chairman, when I, when I join the Authority, I want to be able to be a part of this. When I think about the backbone of how essential it is, this kind of expenditure and application is what we're all about.
Absolutely.
To ensure that kind of reliability. So it's great to be a part of this.
Great. Motion moved, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for the support.
In addition, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of the following utilities actions. One, an award of a competitively bid four-year construction services contract to Public Utilities Maintenance, Inc. in the amount of $20,230 Maintenance, Inc. in the amount of $20,234,110 for the Central Region Power Painting Project as part of the Transmission Life Extension and Modernization, or TLEM, program, and the authorization of capital expenditures in the amount of $9,331,800, and the award of three-year competitively bid contract to Paris Escavating, Inc. in the amount of $7,339,000 for Phase Two of the Hatch Covered Deck Grounding and Surface Rehabilitation Project at the St. Lawrence FDR Project. Again, these are items thoroughly discussed at the Finance Committee meeting, and I ask for a motion for these two items.
I'll take the Finance Committee's, your motion as the motion, seconded by the judge. Unless there's any other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Regarding the financial operations, the Finance Committee also recommends that the trustees adopt a policy for hedging program to manage cash flow risks on non-energy commodity-linked customer contracts, and also to release $30 million in funds during 2020 in support of the residential consumer discount program created in connection with the Recharge New York Power Program. Again, another item discussed at the Finance Committee, but with Adam and his team. So the Finance Committee moved this to the full board for adoption.
Second.
Second. Any other questions? Commentists, an extension of our existing hedging program, give us another arrow in the quiver. So unless there's any other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
Finally, regarding the commercial operations, the Finance Committee recommends that the trustees authorize the inclusion of the operational support and maintenance support program for energy efficiency customers as part of the authority's energy efficiency program. Approve the award of a contract to EJ Electric TND LLC in the amount of $15 million for a term of up to five years for maintenance of streetlights owned by municipalities statewide who are participating in the authority's operation and maintenance program for outdoor lighting, and to approve additional capital expenditures of $10,223,400 for the Customer Digital Experience Program. This funding will be used for the procurement of software and the development of digital solutions for our customers. Again, an item discussed at the Finance Committee meeting around our energy efficiency program, and the general focus is providing our customers what they're asking for. And so with that, the Finance Committee submits that.
So moved. Got a second? Thanks, Michael. Again, yeah, further to, you know, the good work, as we heard Sarah recap earlier, and you know, a lot of exciting growth and new initiatives in the commercial arena. So unless there's any other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Thanks very much. Tracy, appreciate all your efforts there, and obviously some significant and very important initiatives for us. We started today with a couple of committee meetings. First up, in terms of reporting out, Mike Balboni with our Cyber and Physical Security Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Cyber and Physical Security Committee held an executive session today to discuss the security posture and profile of NIPA, specifically as it relates to the nation-state sponsored attacks against electric grids. In open session, Casey Karns, the authority CIO, provided a security briefing and explained essentially how we are leaning forward as an authority, and we are keenly focused on grid reliability. And he also talked about recent reports and how the threats have been characterized. Again, working with our federal partners and industry partners as well. And he also discussed NIPA's participation in the GridX V exercise that was conducted last fall. And he also provided a summary as to how the security team is integrating with a variety of different partners and objectives to further integrate cybersecurity into every aspect of the entire enterprise.
That was a great discussion, as always. Very informative. And I continue to be impressed by the talent and team and, you know, focus of the organization. So appreciate your time and effort there, Michael. And we had a short Governance Committee meeting, ably led by our then-acting Chair, Dennis Traynor. Acting Chair, would you like to report out?
I certainly would.
The results of that session?
Thank you. The Governance Committee met this morning and adopted a motion to recommend that the board adopt new committee appointments as set forth in the materials, and the appointment of Christina M. Reynolds as Treasurer. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the Governance Committee's recommendations regarding committee appointments and the appointment of the Treasurer.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, and you're no longer acting. Congratulations.
That's good news.
Here of our Governance Committee.
This means you failed, didn't it?
Yeah, no. No, no, no.
Second prize is two appointments.
Right, right. It was a successful debut, and we look forward to many encore performances. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That concludes our committee reports, and I think our last item of the day is to give due recognition to one of our important partners in the industry, who's stepping away.
Yeah, so this is a resolution to honor Sue Kelly, who just retired from being president of the American Public Power Association. As you know, we are a member, a longstanding member of APPA. Sue has been a great leader of our trade association, representing the interests of municipal and state-owned utilities in Washington, DC. And she is retiring from, you know, after a long service and tenure, and we work closely with her on emergencies, when we need mutual aid, help from other public power utilities in New York, or when we provide mutual aid assistance to other states, including Puerto Rico and U.S. Virgin Islands. So this, you know, resolution is really to honor and to thank her for her service. Thank you.
Echo and reaffirm, thanks for that, Gil. So unless there's any other matters to come before this distinguished group, that concludes our agenda and meeting for the day. Our next session, as has been referenced a couple of times earlier, is at the end of March, March 31st, literally. It'll be our annual meeting, so all the more fun and festivities will surround that. And until then, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn today's session.
So moved.
So moved by the Chair of the Governance Committee, Dennis Traynor. Have a second?
Thanks.
Second, Tracy McKibben, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks very much, everyone, for your time and attention. We appreciate your support, and kudos again, Gil and your team, for an outstanding 2019, and we know even bigger and better things to come this year. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.